Good evening, welcome to our meeting of the Town Show South Orange Village Planning Board. Jettie, could you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Brown, Mr. Colton Maxx.
Here.
Ms. Foye, Ms. Bauer, Mr. Hutt, Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Torpe.
Here.
Reverend Wilson.
President.
Ms. Gooja.
Here.
Mr. Allen and Mr. Goldstein.
Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2013 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2012, and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on February 4th, 2013. If there are no suggested changes, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
I'll take the motion.
Motion by Deviani, seconded by Michael. You'll have to do a roll call because I know at a minimum I have to abstain, so...Jettie, if you'll call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Colton Maxx.
Abstain.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Torpe.
Yes.
Reverend Wilson.
Yes.
And Ms. Gooja.
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. I just want to take two...I want to insert two items into our agenda. Item number...at this point, one item will be the selection of our village council and...excuse me, our council for the planning board, and second will be selection of the planning firm for the planning board. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would move the reappointment for this fiscally calendar year from Jan...January 1 through December 31 of 13, the appointment of our esteemed council to your right.
That would be Mr. Dwyer.
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome back for another year.
Mr. Chair, I will also move the appointment of higher and gruel for the same term fiscal year commencing January 1, expiring 12/31/13.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on with the agenda as originally printed, approval of resolution, case number 225, Sister Joan Repka, Block 416, Lot 3, 425 Scotland Road. Minor site plan, the applicant seeks the demolition of an existing three-story residence, site to be backfilled, graded, and ceded. The resolution was passed out before the meeting this evening. Only those who voted in favor of...in favor of this application at the February meeting are allowed to vote on the resolution this evening. Could either village...could either council or our secretary tell us which members are able to vote on this, please? I know I was...I was not...I recused myself, so I'm not eligible. Mr. Miller voted against the application, so he is not eligible. Reverend Wilson.
I voted against it.
And...okay, so you two voted for it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there's your answer. So there are two people eligible to vote on this application, which...
What's majority of two?
So in any case, I do have to have one of you actually propose in the other second, if you're willing to do so.
I propose to appro-
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There were some revisions made to the draft that was passed out. Most of them...
All right.
Most of them are a result of discussions with the board planner, and I'd like to just go over those now.
Please.
As I think they're worth considering. If you look on page two of the resolution, between three and five, there should be a paragraph number four there that was inserted. If you look on page three, there are no changes. If you look on page four, this is the recitation of the history of the property, the site being designated historic.
You just...you just turn that off, so...
Yeah. Okay. So at the top of this, page four, it starts with historic sites, so we're all on that same page. Look down, the third line down, what is listed as 1979 should be actually 1997, that was transposed. After that is a sentence which reads, "Ordinance 2012 of 16, adopted on December 10, 2012, listed the subject premises among the locally designated landmarks designated as historic properties." That was the reasons resolution, which we discussed at the last meeting. I thought that ought to be added, as did Susan. Further down in the sentence, which is about the 10th line down, begins with the Committee to Study Historic Preservation Commissions. It goes on to say the reexamination of the master plan, that should be the 2000 reexamination of the master plan. Following that, it'll say the 2007 Smart Growth Plan, the 2009 Preserving Community Character Report, and the 2011 Master Plan Reexam all acknowledge the importance of preserving historic properties. So those were changes made to that recitation. In the next paragraph under decisions, where it talks about on the third line down, the application on the village and its residents and the surrounding property owners, and having considered whether the application, and inserted "for minor site plan approval and major soil disturbance, but not the demolition permit application," which is a way of distinguishing the fact that this board was only dealing with the site plan and soil disturbance, and not weighing in on actually the demolition. And that's it.
Counsel?
Yeah.
Going to stay on that same page, you're saying 19979 should be 1997, period.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. Those are all the changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Again, I'll entertain the motion.
So moved.
A second.
You call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Gooja?
Yes.
And Reverend Wilson.
Yes.
So the resolution has been approved. Just out of curiosity, the Historic Preservation Commission, did they meet? Do we know what happened out of that meeting?
Aye.
And how does that impact anything relating to...
I understand they were appointed and have met one time, is that correct?
That's my understanding, but I don't know the outcome of any discussion that they had about this.
Okay. Sal, do you happen to know anything? No? Nope. Okay. Okay, so now we're moving on to the next item in the agenda.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There was one other change. In the last condition of the resolution, it now states that a copy of the resolution was forwarded to the building department because, as we recall, they were dealing with a demolition permit, so that was added as well.
Mr. Chairman, just for future, if the property is on historic roll and an application comes in, shouldn't that be referred directly to the Historic Commission and not us?
Yes.
It does, under the ordinance, get referred automatically by the board secretary to the HPC.
Well, this one didn't. That's why I want to make sure that any future ones...
We also have to understand that this board's timeline is set by state statute, so we need to move according to how that timeline's set.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, application for completeness. I understand...
I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you for assisting us. Okay, application for completeness, case number 227, Seton Hall University, Aquinas and Stafford Halls, Block 901, Lot 3, 400 South Orange Avenue. Preliminary and final site plan, Stafford Hall, the applicant proposes to replace the existing classroom building with a new academic building. Aquinas Hall, the applicant proposes to add a new fourth floor, new entry lobby, and northwest corridor addition to add 164 beds. And...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There now appears that we only have four members of the planning board present at this meeting.
Yes.
And as I understand it, and as Cox would seem to explain it to us, he's the treatise on land use, without a quorum, the board is unable to act. I've asked Mr. Coakley if he would like to weigh in on that, if he has anything to the contrary.
I don't have Cox in front of me, so I really can't respond. I certainly accept your interpretation or reading of it. I guess my...
Could you please speak into the microphone?
Yeah, and let me introduce myself. Kevin Coakley, Colonel Foley of the Henderson Hall of Management. It's my sort of instinct was that once...
Please pull it up, Mr. Coakley.
Once a quorum was present, even though somebody disqualified themselves, that the board could act, in other words, that the board didn't have to act with five people if they didn't have a quorum because of disqualification. The doctrine that I've understood is necessity that the board has the right to act when it...with less than a quorum, when it doesn't have a quorum because of a disqualification, because of somebody living too close, or some matter such as that. But Mr. Dwyer, you feel to the contrary.
I do, and having looked at it again, I see that what Cox says is it thus appears that while a quorum may be present at the commencement of the meeting, when a particular case is called in which a member or members are disqualified for interest, those members are no longer to be counted for quorum purposes, and a lack of a quorum may arise for that particular matter. And having started that off with him saying that there's no action to be taken at any meeting unless a quorum is present, I'm concerned that if we proceed, we're going to be subject to having it overturned if someone were to disagree with the board.
Well, let me just start this...we're discussing right now the administrative completeness of the two matters, and I mean, generally administrative completeness, decisions are made by committees of boards. I don't know whether there's any requirement in this case that the full board act on administrative completeness. So we are...this matter would be on for the agenda. Now, I'm talking about the Stafford and Aquinas for April 10, and if it were to be declared complete, then we would proceed with noticing for that evening. So I would think that an administrative matter could be handled certainly by less than a quorum of the board.
Let me check the ordinance, please, Mr. Coakley, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
It talks about the technical review committee and its completeness duees, and I just want to find it.
I agree.
I agree.
Does the board have to deem it complete?
And people should...
that the technical review committee is authorized under the ordinance to deem an application complete, so...
But isn't that superseded by the municipal land use law? I thought it was the board's duty to deem the application.
The board can always delegate that.
But it hasn't delegated that.
I mean, isn't that...isn't that the problem?
There really isn't a technical review committee.
We don't have...
Do we even have a technical review committee?
We have the site plans committee and that's...
We do have a technical review committee. It's consisting of the board attorney and planner and engineer for each application. It's supposed to have two lay members. It never has operated with two lay members.
But I thought it was...
It typically operated under those three members.
I thought it was decided a while ago that those members would provide recommendations to the board, but the board would ultimately act, because the municipal land use law, I believe, says that the application has to be deemed by the board complete or incomplete within 45 days.
I mean, either there's a technical review committee that should act on this, or there isn't, and if there isn't, then the board has to act within the rules set out to the board.
But the...
Isn't that the way it's...
Mr. Chair.
The board could also reconvene, because the member that had to recuse herself from this particular discussion doesn't have to recuse herself from creating the committee. So if the board needed to, the board could create the committee, and then the committee could meet with her having recused herself and review it.
I think that...I think our ordinance...I think the South Orange ordinance, the way it currently reads, authorizes technical review committee to deem an application complete. And if the technical review committee were to make that recommendation, it has been the way it operated up until last year, actually.
And I recall when this provision was added, which is not unlike a number of other municipalities where some boards have determined that completely should be done. It's a technical matter and it doesn't necessarily have to be done by the board.
Susan, you need to speak into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. And so there is...I do recall when this was submitted. Now, it's obviously up to the board as to what they feel comfortable in doing, but certainly, I would agree with Pat that there is an option here, that there is a provision that has a technical review committee. They can deem the application complete, and it's there. It doesn't have to be made up. The other option would be potentially to deem the application complete and to move forward at a similar evening at the next...at the next meeting, obviously with the risk that the applicant would have to beg that for...that it wasn't deemed complete.
Another option, I guess, is that within 45 days of the filing of the application, it's deemed complete if it's not ruled incomplete. So I mean, we're just looking for some sort of certainty to come to the next meeting and move the application, but that's another opportunity, I guess.
But I believe there have been completeness letters issued on both applications by the board's professionals, so...
Yes.
So that...the deemed complete, I don't think is at play.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion that we...
Please.
Table this for five minutes, reconvene the board, and appoint a technical committee that fills the bill.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the ordinance tells us who the technical review committee is. It tells us that the committee shall consist of the following: the village engineer, the village planner, the village zoning official, and the attorney to the board having jurisdiction to manage, and such other persons who may be appointed to or asked to join the committee by the board's trustees. As far as I know, no other laypeople have been asked to join the committee, so it's always operated with those professionals, which would be the zoning official, the engineer, the planner, and myself. So if the applicant...if the board feels that it's...it can act that way, I think it's authorized by the statute to deem it complete.
Okay. At the...I mean, at the risk of...I mean, is there anybody else who wants to weigh in on the subject? At the risk of, you know, standing in the way of this, I mean, I think this is one of those distinctions between what you can do and what you should do. This board clearly delegated to itself the authority to make determinations about completeness. It did not...it specifically did not delegate that to a technical review committee. I mean, so...and there was a reason for that. So the question now is, tonight, in order to advance a particular application, are we now going to take what the board clearly put some thought into and decided that we were going to handle in a particular manner as a matter of policy, and decide that we're not going to proceed in that fashion in order to move things ahead with this application? I mean, I'll...I'm not in favor of it. I'll just be blunt about it. I'm not in favor of it. We've created...you know, we've created this process, and I think that if we're going to take our processes and throw them out the window for expediency every time we, you know, we like one application and don't like another application, or want to make it easier for one applicant over another, I don't know why we create policies. So in my honest opinion, while I respect the work that our professionals do, if we had wanted to delegate that to our professionals, we would have done it. We specifically did not do it, and I don't think we should be doing it here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard a couple of points?
Please.
You know, this is the old adage comes to mind, you know, hard cases make bad law. But, you know, in this particular case, the applicant has no quarrel with the report of the board planner as far as, you know, her recommendations as to the completeness of the application or the waivers of completeness items. Secondly, the university has a fairly pressing need on this Aquinas-Stafford application because it relates to getting funding for the project that can only be obtained if approvals are in place at a certain point in time. You know, the old term shovel-ready, well, it really applies here. So that's really the reason why we would ask the board to find a way to move this application forward.
Also, might I suggest there were actually two reports. Amland also looked at the application and provided a completeness review as well, and one of the things to keep in mind is the application was submitted on, I think it was the end of January, so it would, within 45 days, be deemed complete anyway. I think, as Pat says, if the technical review committee has the ability to deem an application complete, and as defined in there, it would be the engineer, the planner, and the attorney, then what I would recommend is, based on the two completeness reviews and any...and I would ask Susan and Eric to go over their reviews, and based on that, any additional information that they've asked for, I would recommend be conditioned on the application being deemed complete at this point, because I understand what you're saying, and it's...this wouldn't be an issue if there was another member up there. I mean, it would be pretty straightforward, but I think you're taking a chance, and if there's additional information that the board wants to hear. I mean, you can always ask for more information once the meeting starts. You can always ask for more, and that'll play things further, but being able to at least tell the applicant, make sure this additional information is before the board by the next meeting, and... I mean, I hear what you're saying. I, quite frankly, in that circumstance, would prefer that the board just didn't act, meaning no technical review committee, no board action, 45 days passes, and it's automatically deemed complete. But in that way, we're not...we're not obviating our own...we're not dismissing our own clear...I mean, if we had wanted to do things another way, we would have set it up to do it another way. I don't think that we should create rules out of expediency in order to deal with any one particular application or one particular applicant. I think this is probably a fine application, and I'm more than happy to hear it. I think, you know, we definitely will hear it, all things being equal in April, and that's as it should be. But throwing out our, you know, throwing out our rules as it relates to the review for completeness, I think is misguided, and I don't support it. So I think that we can have a conversation about this. I think we can go through the planner's report. I think we can go through the engineer's report. At the end of that, we'll...I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, unless I'm going to be outvoted, although I don't know how that could happen, because we don't have a quorum, we'll, you know, we'll...we'll at that point just move on, and the 45 days will pass, and that'll be that. You know, then the applicant will know what things we're looking for. It's been made clear in the...you know, if it's not already made clear in the engineer's report, in the planner's report, and any questions that come from us, it'll be hopefully made clear by the end of our discussion, which will not...which will not result in any vote, but which will just result in, you know, our non-action, which will then lead to formal approval. That's the approach I would like to take unless any of my fellow board members feels strongly otherwise. Reverend Wilson, is that okay with you?
It's the same thing.
I'm just...bear with me for one second. Alex, do you have...is that okay with you?
As long as it's what council advises.
Okay.
Counsel? We could ask the applicant, after hearing the feedback from this evening's...I'm not sure to call this a meeting or not, but after hearing the feedback from this evening's get-together, as well as review letters, would they be willing to adjourn completeness to the beginning of the next meeting, at which time the board could deem it complete, and if you've noticed, begin hearing it at the same time?
Well, we haven't seen...I haven't seen Mr. Renda's report. I'd appreciate it if I could see that.
It's actually from Amland Engineering. It's the board's consulting engineer.
We're on the...which case are we talking about?
I'm sorry?
Which case is that?
This is still case number 227.
227.
We're talking about here.
Can maybe...I've just given that to our engineer to take a look at it, and...
This is 227.
Okay. You have two...
Case number on it.
You do have the wrong case number on it, but it is case 220.
227?
227, yes.
And that's the dated March 1st?
Yes, March 1st.
I think that's it for us.
Susan, do you have one?
I'm sorry.
Do you have one?
I just...I'm looking at Eric's right now. I have not seen it before this evening.
Matthew Moore's?
No, Eric's. I have not seen it.
Leader of way.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Our own consultant was... Her own consultant was recommending that the application be deemed incomplete for engineering issues.
Yes, I was just discussing this with-
I mean, there are several-
Well, we have, well, the applicant is currently reviewing the report, and so we'll wait to hear what they have to say. They can choose to respond tonight, or they could choose perhaps to have this matter adjourned into the next meeting.
But Ms. Gruel's report defers to the engineer's recommendation in some of the instances, so reading the engineering report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the time. We've looked at Mr. Keller's report, and we are prepared to accommodate the items set forth in this report. So, we will agree that you may declare the application complete at the next meeting of April 10th, and we will be ready to proceed at the same time.
Okay. Everybody in, find that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, you know, I'd like to emphasize the importance of the application. So, you know, if we can be certain that we can proceed on that date as much as humanly possible, we would appreciate it.
Well, in the interim, I'm sure you'll be speaking with Mr. Keller and with our professionals to make sure that any and all of those issues are addressed, and hopefully by that time, come back and advise us that it should be deemed complete, and if not, I'm sure, hopefully we'll be able to talk it through otherwise.
Okay.
So.
So, can I ask Mr. Chairman, if that's true, if the applicant seems to be saying that it would prefer to hear that case ahead of the other, is that true?
Yes.
Is that, so that's an imposed problem for me?
The board wants to-
But, but we're still going to hear application 226 this evening, yes? Or are we saying they don't even want to be heard on that this evening?
Well, you, I thought, Mr. Dwyer has ruled that you cannot hear that case this evening.
Well, that's, so first of all, let's take a step back. Completeness, the assumption I was working under is that the application for completeness would be taken care of tonight, and that we would vote on it tonight if we in fact had a quorum. Normally, this is done in one evening. I'm not really sure, is application number, are we under the belief that application number 226 would be completed in one evening?
Actually, you're right.
Because if not, then, then somebody else could, one of the members who is not here, who would otherwise be eligible to vote, meaning doesn't have a conflict, could watch the video of this, certify to that, and vote on it at the next meeting, assuming that we're not, we don't wrap things up tonight and want to vote this evening. I was working in the presumption that perhaps we were not going to finish application number, on case number 226 tonight. If we are, then, then my point, you know, my point, you know, doesn't hold. So, but I don't really know enough about the application, except I got lots of documents here. I kind of figured we might actually be going on into another meeting. Am I incorrect?
Well, I understand, Mr. Chairman, the board, at least my recommendation to the board is, without a quorum, it should not hear that application 226, because it would be subject to someone disagreeing with that board's decision to do so. Therefore, it would be incumbent upon that, the board, to adjourn that application, as well as the application for completeness on 227, which-
Maybe we would, just for the record, complete the discussion of 227, of Aquinas Stafford, and close that matter before we move on to the other matter, just for the, is that agreeable, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So-
So, the proposal is to extend completeness for 227 through the April meeting.
Yes.
And with the thought that if the board were to deem that application complete at the April meeting, you would have noticed, and the applicant would want to proceed with that application at the April meeting.
Yes. And we will give notice under that assumption.
Hemwors.
And just for the record, we would, both Omlund and our firm would then, in addition, do our review, our substantive review of the application, in case this board chooses to proceed with that application.
Okay.
Is that what the board would do?
I think so. Everybody agree?
And one other thing, if there's additional information that the applicant is going to provide, it should be provided a minimum of 10 days prior to that meeting, correct?
Correct.
Well, initial information, but that, I mean, that's not a hard and fast rule. I mean, you can provide additional information at the hearing, but to the extent that we get reviews, and we have the opportunity, we will present 10 days.
By additional information, I mean information recommended to be provided for completeness.
Right, right. Yes, for completeness, for sure.
So, okay, so that seems clear. I just, I just, I still want to just talk for another second about case number 226.
Okay.
It is my recollection that, from both being on the planning board and the board of adjustment, that there have been times when a member who is not present for every meeting may ultimately be permitted to vote on an application.
Yes.
If that member were to certify that they had in fact viewed, so, so again, my question is, on case number 226, why would, if in fact we believe that the application would take two meetings to be dealt with, why would we not start the application this evening with the notion that we could wrap it up in, perhaps in short order, at a following meeting?
Because we don't have a quorum.
We don't have to have a quorum to start a hearing. We only have to have a quorum in order to be able to cast the vote. And if we're not voting this evening, then it's not relevant whether or not we have a quorum at this moment. That's-
I would take a different view, Mr. Chairman. I, my view is that without a quorum sitting, the board can't act at all, can't hear the case. If there was a quorum here, and there was an absent member who had read the transcript before the next meeting, that would entitle the absent member to vote. You're right. But without a quorum present, we cannot act. We can't even hear the case. The board's not authorized to do any-
So, action includes even hearing?
Yes.
That was my interpretation of it.
Okay. Far be it for me to end my evening, stop my evening, my evening earlier.
The only other request that I have to make is that we not be handed an engineering report that's dated March 1, at the night of the meeting, when nobody has a chance to read it before a meeting. I just think that's unfair to the board. It's unfair to the applicant, too.
I would agree.
Understood.
Does, does there need to be any, does there need to be any action taken then, or any acknowledgement made by the applicant about extending the time for which case number 226 can be heard?
Well, in this application, you have 120 days from the date that it was declared complete, which was back in January, I believe. So, there's a, there's a fair amount of time, because there's variances involved in this case, so that's why you have 120 days. So, we need to confer, though, to see what date we will ask you to defer this to, given the April 10th date. And then we'd like you to call, call the case for the record to that date. And we'll, we'll extend some period of time beyond that, whatever that date is, if need be.
Is that sufficient?
For now, for today's purposes, for what we can do is to announce whoever's watching, without having a quorum, announce who's ever watching, and make sure it's posted and carried for the next week, for the next month's meeting, because we don't have a quorum.
Right. But it may not be next month. It may be, if possible, the following month, because we-
Well, we'll deal with that next month.
What?
We'll deal with that next month.
Okay. All right. So, let me just confer.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, I think we have to set up a procedure where we know who is coming to a meeting and who is eligible to vote. And we should also send a note to our other missing planning board members, that they should watch the videos that they've missed, just in case we have another couple of conflicts, or somebody doesn't show up, that there would be enough people to hear the application and vote.
Point is well taken.
Yeah. And also for the next agenda, just so we don't have to tally, can we please add the definitions that we have to approve?
Okay.
Tired of carrying, and Ms. Gruel can get whatever she has to get out to the board in the way of refresher.
All right. So you'll carry, Mr. Chairman, until April 10th without further notice?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. There being no further business before the board, I call this meeting to adjourn.
Other than you have my apology.